And final paving will soon begin on Charlotte Street to complete the two-way conversion. Paving on Rockland, Dolphin, Anne, and Juliana Streets, Hershey Avenue will also be done this spring and summer. Water main replacements will also be, begin soon as East Chestnut Street between Franklin and Broad Street, on Reservoir Street, between Chestnut and Walnut Street. Bike improvements and green infrastructure work on Christian Street will begin in May. We also have three resolutions that we heard. Council Resolution Number 18, adopting the Active Transportation Plan, a guide in, which will be heard on April 23rd. So, that was a guide in future decision-making related to the conservation and recreation of non-motorized transportation. And the last two, Administration Resolution Number 15 and 16 are on the agenda tonight, and we will speak more on that when they come up on the agenda.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to Economic Development and Neighborhood Revaluation Committee, Councilwoman Craig.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had one item on the agenda, and that was, we'll have, it'll be up for first reading tonight, that was amending Administration Bill Number 4, 2019, Chapter 240, Sections 1 and 4 of the Restaurant Inspections Code. And that will be coming up a little bit later.
Thank you. Move on to Finance Committee, Councilman Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee discussed three items on the agenda last week, two of which were on this evening's agenda for action, Administration Resolutions Number 12 and 13. And the third part of our committee discussion was a 2018 year-end financial update. In that update, Mr. Hopkins shared the following information. The budget adopted for 2018 included the use of $3 million in reserve funds to balance that budget. However, 2018 actual revenues exceeded budget revenue estimates by $1.9 million. Coupled with spending $1.74 million below budgeted amounts, the result was a surplus of about $608,000 that will be added to city reserves. Surpluses were also realized in the storm water, solid waste and recycling, and sewer budgets, with the latter fund receiving a significant increase in revenue following negotiations to resolve a longstanding building dispute with the Lancaster area sewer authority, which paid the city nearly 80% of the money owed totaling $4.8 million. Additionally, the sale of Park City Center yielded a $913,000 windfall in real estate transfer tax to the city. All said, these additions are going to the reserve funds. They heightened the city's reserves to a total of $13.8 million. And although that's good news, with costs continuing to rise at current rates and no increase in real estate tax revenue, that reserve could be completely depleted in just three years. Also discussed, the construction of two new fire stations, which can be accomplished by using the reserve funds and avoid having to borrow money. And furthermore, we learned that the recent bond refinancing completed in February has resulted in savings of about $838,000 to the general fund, not originally included in the 2019 budget. And since 2010, refinancings have saved the city nearly $12.8 million. Finally, due to the LASSA and Park City windfalls, the city only drew $2 million from its tax and revenue appreciation note funds this year, half the amount used in prior years, and was repaid by March 1st after only one month at an interest cost of only $6,000. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Ballantyne. Community Development Planning Committee, Councilman Smith-Wadeau.
Thank you, President Reichenbach. We had a fairly busy community planning committee meeting. We started with the review of the Historical Commission recommendations for 221, 227 North Prince Street. We had Mr. Christopher Peers, Chair of the Historical Commission, present that commission's recommendation of denial for a certificate of appropriateness for both the demolition of the building there and the proposed construction. We also had a presentation from Mr. Myers, of Everly Myers, who is present this evening. Council discussed it, and then we heard a fair bit from the public and a couple of other members of the Historical Commission, who were nice enough to be present. Council members were able to ask questions and receive some additional information, both from Mr. Myers and letters from a couple of members of the public on this issue. We heard from Gloria Mast, and Winslow, Scott Seuss, Randolph Harris, and Tammy Rojas. Ultimately, a recommendation was made to move the, or sorry, a motion was made and approved to move said recommendation forward to this evening's council meeting where we will vote on it. We also reviewed Historical Commission recommendations for approval of certificates of appropriateness for the demolition of the 425 West King and 333 East King Street fire stations, and the city's plan to construct new fire stations where they are. We pretty quickly actually discussed and moved forward Council Resolution Number 17, 2019, which would support establishment of a healthcare advocate in the state of Pennsylvania, which we'll be discussing tonight. And we also gave the go-ahead to release the proposed zoning text amendments and begin the review and adoption process. We'll get into three of those issues more deeply on tonight's agenda. That's all that I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Personnel Committee, Councilwoman Diaz.
Yes, Mr. President. What I have here, and I'm not sure Mr. Barret is here, did he come tonight?
No, I don't think so.
Well, we basically discussed to have him nominated for the Board of Health. His term will be from March 31st, 2019 to March 31st, 2024. And I'd like to make a motion for his appointment to be approved. That's all I have.
So we have a motion on the table?
Second.
Motion and a second. Council comments? From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Appointing Cedric Weber-Rea to the Board of Health.
Yep.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Perret.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeau.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Reichenbach.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The committee, the whole, also met, excuse me, on April 1st. There was one item that we discussed. It was Council Resolution Number 14, which is also on this evening's agenda, a resolution supporting Governor Wolf's Restore Pennsylvania Initiative. We'll talk more about that when it comes up on the agenda. So, having gone through that, we will move into our legislative agenda, and we will start with our Heritage District. Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. Consider the following applications and recommendations from the Historical Commission for improvements to properties within the Heritage Conservation District. And first is 221 North Prince Street LLC, owners of 223 to 227 North Prince Street, and 221 North Prince Street, and the proposed demolition of a three-and-a-half-story brick commercial building and a two-story rear portion of the building at 223, 227 North Prince Street. And of the, and of the two-story rear portion of the brick building at 221 North Prince Street to allow new construction on the sites.
I have a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to uphold the Historic Commission recommendation of denial. Council comments? From the public? Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Maureen Fitzgerald of North Mary Street, former owner of 46 North Prince Street, and here to Timbuktu for about 29 years. I'm here to comment. I want to start, and I'm going to read a couple of quotes. They'll be pretty brief. And thank you for the opportunity for speaking. This is the fourth time I've shown up at a public meeting in a very long time.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you. I'm going to start with a quote from a letter that Everly Myers wrote to City Council on April 6th. "We do not think that the Lancaster community can continue to grow without the need to modify the city's historic structures." I agree with that. I agree with Everly Myers. Modify is what we want, not demolish. The next thing I want to quote is an article that Jeremy Young, who is, I forget his exact title, but he works for Lancaster City Alliance. And this is from an LNP article that ran on April 7th. "Lancaster City makes up what is today one of the largest national register of historic places, historic districts in the country. And our old buildings are a major factor in what makes the city special and attractive. Our community has a tradition of being very protective of our architectural heritage. What's more, the city has emerged in recent decades as a model for rehabilitating and creatively reusing many of its architectural gems. From its historic homes, to the conversion of warehouses, churches, into housing units, hotels, offices, and cultural attractions." I believe that he was advocating for the renewal of a tool called the Pennsylvania Historic Preservation Tax Credit. I believe, this is not my area of expertise, but there are such programs from the federal government as well. Two examples, using the state tax credits. There have been two in Lancaster since the program's inception. The Keppel Building Residential Retail Development on North Queen Street, which I must comment, the developers from Pittsburgh who did that, did it after they completed Steeple View. Not before they had three or four projects up in the air and nothing was completed. Just a comment. And the Pennsylvania College of Art and Design Student Housing Project on North Market Street, which combined represent nearly $11 million in reinvestment. Now, those projects reused and modified existing buildings. So, basically, I am asking City Council tonight to vote no to demolition. And I would like to just bring it to your attention that when Everly Myers bought this building, it was or is occupied by three businesses, a restaurant, a bookstore, and an antique mall that I believe had 25 dealers. If it was so unsafe that it couldn't be occupied, why was it occupied? And the last thing, I'm referring to an article that I read after the City Council Committee meeting, that I believe Tim wrote. And much to my surprise, the article stated that El Hop, back in December, Ray Agostino, had given Everly Myers $350,000 in a grant to do planning and whatever it is you do. What, what?
Loan.
Loan, I'm sorry, loan, I'm sorry. Loan, to plan for this project. At that time, it did not involve demolition. I really would ask them to go back to that plan. But most importantly, I just believe that we need affordable housing in the city. I could not afford to live in Willow Valley, and I'm sure I couldn't afford to live in a 13-story high-rise on Prince Street. That's why I live on Mary Street. I hope I stay here until they take me out in a box. But the bottom line is, being a resident of the city for over 30 years, I've lived in four neighborhoods, to the best of my knowledge, and I am relying on former City Council members, former mayors, present and former city employees, there has never been an inventory in the Central Business District, to the best of my knowledge, of our second, third, and fourth-story buildings. My building, 46 North Prince Street, has affordable housing, it's had affordable housing for over 30 years. I only registered the apartments after reading about it in the paper after having been there for over 20 years. I believe that the city of Lancaster could encourage property owners who own, you know, I look at House of Pizza, wow, how many apartments could be up there if we could just get them to maybe develop that property? Look what Gib Armstrong did to the building next door. He took it away from apartments, and he built wonderful studio apartments. Great, we want to market for everybody. But there are plenty of second, third, and fourth-story buildings in the Central Business District that could be turned into affordable housing. And if they did it one unit at a time, they would only have to bring it up to city code, they would not have to go according to state code with everything else that you have to do with firewalls, and sprinklers, and yada, yada, yada. We have the rules on the books to encourage property owners to do the right thing and make full use of their property. Lancaster newspaper did it for PCAT, those second and third stories on King Street hadn't been occupied for all the years I've lived here, and now they are. Let's do more of those projects. Thank you for listening, please vote no for demolition.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Any other comments from the public?
I may have to adjust this a little bit because I wrote it so fast. Okay. In regards to the current proposal, like, for the buildings on North Prince Street, Myers stated he intends to develop the property one way or another. Based on the comments at last Monday's meeting referring to integration versus segregation, and the concerns expressed from the community, there is only one way to really justifiably develop the property on North Prince Street. The Lancaster Healthcare Rights Committee is proposing the current idea be squashed, and a real in-depth look at making this property an affordable housing project. You have already heard us speak on some issues tonight regarding poverty, lack of healthcare access and affordable housing, and our willingness to work with you in seeing all the needs of the people in this community are met. We are concerned that our elected officials will take a much, will take away a much-needed healthcare facility to provide affordable housing, yet we need both in Lancaster County. And we have the ability to provide both services. You heard some of the examples from her. You can't justifiably offer one much-needed service in lieu of another when issues are interconnected and lead to poverty. We are sick and tired of urban and rural issues being addressed separately as if they are not interconnected. Local officials waste precious time pointing fingers at one another instead of working together to alleviate the issues that cause poverty throughout our entire county. It's time city, townships, and county government officials work together. There have been times we could have had affordable housing units in the county area, but townships didn't approve the projects. One case in point, gap. They denied a developer who wanted to put in affordable housing units.
I don't mean to interrupt, but are you, can we focus specifically on this topic?
Yeah, I'm going back, it's kind of like all like in.
It's okay, I just want to make sure we don't veer off-topic with the specific issue that we're discussing. Thank you, sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, I'm just kind of wanting to point out some of the examples that we have had where we could have worked together and had affordable housing.
I just want to focus, make sure we focus on the issue that's on the agenda for public comment right now, please. Thank you.
Okay. Well, anyway, so you heard our proposal, that we're proposing something like that be looked at versus anything else. And I can just send this statement then to you all in an email, because it's very important that you actually hear the rest of it, even though you're not allowing me to say it right now. Thank you.
We also have a public comment at the end of the meeting, that you could discuss it if you'd like to. Is there anybody else that wants to comment on this specific issue right now? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Lynda Leachey. I want to make two points. The first one regarding the immediate circumstance, and then the second regarding a sort of longer-term issue. In thinking this through, and I attended all of the meetings where both the conceptual review and the Heritage, the Historical Commission review, I think the present circumstance puts a city, and I mean its residents, not just the administration, but it puts us in a really bad position should demolition be approved. The Historical Commission resoundingly and unanimously rejected the proposed new construction as inappropriate in every way to this site. In fact, I would use the word excoriation, but, so, if demolition is approved, we have no approved building to put on that site, right? So, that in itself inverts the logic of the review process. So what happens? Do we have a hole in the ground as a placeholder until an appropriate building can be designed and that design is approved? We've heard repeatedly that the design of the building is driven by the economic logic of the project, not the premises of conservation, which are at the heart of the ordinance. So, what if the economic logic of development cannot give the city a building designed to the standards of the ordinance? I've yet to see any evidence that it can, actually. So, we will have lost a key irreplaceable structure in this district. That's the first point. The second is, because this is, comes under the purview of planning and community planning, I think that actually the denial of demolition is an opportunity for us to think really carefully about the language of needs and what creates value. So I've heard repeatedly over the course of these discussions, everything being reduced to a need or a crisis, you know, the crisis of affordable housing, we need this, we need that. And I think when we do that, we lose the ability to think clearly about the future. In my opinion, the city needs to be thinking about and planning for resilience, not to address needs piecemeal, but to think about how we ensure ourselves, how we retain our cohesion, how we retain well-being for all citizens in the face of an uncertain future. And I think that all evidence suggests that we have rapidly transforming generational economies. Gloria Mast spoke to that issue beautifully at the committee meeting. Many urban economists and planners have started to confront this issue very, very seriously, that complex buildings that are designed for a single specialized use, that are bloated in scale and difficult to readapt, will be of limited relevance to us. You know, we're looking at an example on the west side, right? So, this concerns me greatly. There's a lot of evidence that shows that the older, smaller structures have proven to be critical infrastructure for, for really ensuring that the durability of cities. They're of human scale, they're comparatively adaptable to different uses over time, and the litany of different businesses that were housed in this space, as opposed to one you suggest that they spread wealth laterally rather than vertically. And all economic evidence shows that they can, the small, adaptive reuse of smaller buildings consistently punch above their weight economically. So, I would like, I would ask respectfully that City Council take this opportunity to start thinking very broadly about a mandate to plan, so that we don't continually have to be dealing with these sorts of ad hoc issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? I'd like to give the applicants an opportunity to speak that are here. Would you like the opportunity to speak? Sure, come on up.
Can I be sure some time is left for public comment?
Yeah, I didn't see your hand come up, so I was wondering, would you like to speak now before the applicant speaks?
Could the applicant have to speak?
What, that, that'd be fine. Good evening, Ms. Harris, hurry up.
Doing well, thank you. Let me start off by just saying, I think the comments so far have been spot-on, and it really highlights a lot of the, a lot of the complexities of Lancaster City as it grows. The affordable, affordable housing, what is truly affordable, I really appreciate your comments about the actual price point. That's actually a really big deal. And honestly, whether or not the number is 750, or 500, or 250, whatever the number ends up being, I think there's probably, internally at least, a reason to assess what those price points really should be. Those price points were really nego, not negotiated, but discussed with El Hop during the initial conversation with them to not grant, but to loan money to this project to incorporate some affordable housing. Just a clarification from El Hop specifically, the initial proposal with El Hop was to retain the front portion of both the Robberito and the Empire Building, and to demolish behind. And those are the renderings that we showed El Hop, and we initially had the conversation with the city. So, it was after we got the structural report back on the front facade that really changed our trajectory as far as the plan forward. So, I do appreciate the, bringing up the point that I think Lancaster City really does struggle through, or will struggle through, what to do with historic buildings and the needs in the city. And it's honestly not just a clear-cut issue for me either, or for any of the partners that I'm working with. It's something that we grapple with, and obviously, we come out on different, different points and different value, value points as to what is needed, supply, the types of housing, the types of development. Do we value historic buildings more than we value the needs of the people? Who are those people that have needs? How are those needs met? There's a whole bunch of, this is not a very clear-cut thing. And I completely understand the challenges and the outcome of tonight's, whatever the outcome is, of tonight's meeting. Obviously, my desire is to add as much value in these two locations, these two properties as I can. The impacts, cost impacts for retaining and retaining these two structures, dealing with the structural issues, and trying to add density is going to limit the output, if you will, the actual supply side. I don't know what size and scale of a project I would be capable of bringing to market if I am required to keep these two structures. There's going to be a lot, it's going to be a very different, it'll be, it'll look very different. That's not to say at all that I don't intend to try to find ways of adding value in a redevelopment context, or restoration context, whatever it ends up being. It's just going to limit significantly, I think, what I'm capable to invest in the, in the property, and what that innate value would be. I, I'm not asking the city or council to do anything outside of what their ordinance allows them to do. From a density standpoint, the ordinance clearly gives capability for redevelopment in the urban core, as opposed to some of the other neighborhoods. And we are, there's a less and less, there's less and less options to redevelop buildings within the context of the square footage of those buildings. I think the need is far, we're going to need to find a way to add value, add urban infill, add density in the areas that make sense, in order to accommodate the city's growth. And that's really what I'm trying to, that's really what I'm trying to do. So, great comments so far this evening, and I understand there's some aversion to the project that I'm presenting. It's been, I, it's hard not to feel a little, a little personal about the project, because I feel like there is a tremendous amount of value, that I feel like I can contribute to the city through this project, and I want to contribute to the city. If council does not vote in favor of demolition, there's no hard feelings, and I'm going to try to find a way to add value as I can. I just think that this project adds more value than something else that I could provide. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Appreciate the words, yep. Mr. Harris?
Hi, good evening, folks. Randy Harris, 314 West Chestnut Street. Is that too loud?
No.
I hope not. Thanks for the opportunity to express, add to the commentary and the opinions that we're facing today. They're very, very important. In fact, we, I think we're at a tipping point in public policy relative to historic buildings in this community, with this particular project on the table that you're going to be voting on tonight. And that is probably, I would think, comparable to what happened when this Heritage Conservation District was established, with the threat and the ultimate demolition of the Baumgartner Warehouse on North Prince Street at Lemon, that resulted in a wake-up call to this community that we have to do something better to retain and preserve and reuse these obsolete buildings that can obviously have more purpose if we're able to bring the. that can obviously have more purpose if we're able to bring the right creative energy, the right finances, to this table, to bring about a better project. Project, community, and impact for everybody. Small businesses, as Ms. Leachie referenced, is, you know, all of these small opportunities for people to be involved in the community is really, really critical. But so, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight, as opposed to other communities who have nothing on their books, relative to code enforcement, process, public participation, to recognize the value of historic buildings like the city of Lancaster does, à la Mannheim Township, which I was just at last night, which was a not-too-pleasant experience, but that's beside the point. I'd like to ask respectfully, if council, when you're voting on this, would you please give the community the opportunity to have your personal viewpoints expressed tonight, rather than to help us understand how you feel about this project, how you see the future by telling us, before you vote, how you view this issue, so that we have a better understanding of your personal opinions and comprehension and appreciation of the situation that we're facing tonight? So, that's number one, if I hope that that's okay with you folks. If I could reiterate what I said last week, this is a clear case of demolition by neglect, which is clearly spelled out in the Heritage Conservation Ordinance now, as well as years and years ago, when this property was called for condemnation in an emergency situation. I believe that the applicant at that time put together what I would consider a Band-Aid approach to hold that property together, that probably should never have been approved, but it was, and we see it failing today. And we also have to call it a question why the current applicant bought the property in the first place, knowing that there were severe issues involved with it. The public, I'm not sure, has been afforded the opportunity to understand that they've, the council has received an application, or not an application perhaps, but a statement by Everly Myers, backed up by their consultant, claiming economic hardship that they will face if they're not permitted to tear the building down. I'd like to just point out that I'm sure the council realizes that there is no apparent application with the level of evidence required under the ordinance to justify economic hardship. So, unless there's continuing discussions, or a delay, or some type of a compromise, or other, other opportunities to reevaluate the current condition of the property, I don't believe you can, you can vote tonight to justify economic hardship. And I would heartily, heartily recommend that you support the Heritage Commission, the staff's recommendation that this demolition be denied, and of course, as we said before, that there's no real going beyond that with a new construction beyond that. But, all that said, let's see. I think I have everything in order that I wanted to say. I would also like to note, does, do we know, is there a process in place where the public gets to understand who the partner is with this developer who's being put forth to say, "We need to tear this building down to justify what is, in project concept, meets some apparent community needs of, of healthcare, long-term care, memory care, affordable housing, all packaged into one project." Yet, you're being asked to approve the demolition of an incredibly historically important property in our community that is of great value, but the applicant, as far as I know, has not publicly said who this partner is to establish their credibility to carry out a project of several million dollars and deliver as they're proposing. So, that's what's on the table before you tonight, and I don't know if anybody has been given the benefit of understanding who this partner is that's unnamed at this point, but I would submit that somehow, that should be part of the public record. So, we understand the value, the credibility, the stature, the financial backing of this entity, this company, to proceed with the project they're proposing. I think that's all I have to say tonight. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Appreciate it. Yes?
My name is Scott Suston, a property at 300 block of North Queen Street, and I just wanna reiterate, as the developer here talks about adding value to the city, I'd like to reiterate what I did at your committee meeting. You should also evaluate the value that this project, or devalue this project's gonna have on other people in the community, especially the ones in a multiple-block area around it, that have made an investment in the city, that actually live in the city, and have, you know, made time investment. A 13-story building is gonna have an impact on the other property owners around it, and I'm surprised that there aren't more of them here. Maybe they're not made aware of it, or, for whatever reason. But it is gonna have an impact on the neighboring properties, and I really think that if anything's going forward in this, council should reach out to them and get their input and their feelings on it as well, because it's only fair to them. They've been paying taxes, they continue to pay taxes, and this is gonna be an impact on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Kevin Lynn. I live at 13 West Chestnut Street. In fact, when I look out the back of my building, I can see the back of the Robberito Building. So, this is a project that will impact me in many ways personally, but I think that's neither here nor there. What I wanna talk about, just very briefly, is things that make my life worthwhile, and why I chose to live in Lancaster, and where I do. As developers, no doubt, very much aware, we have a walkability score of 99 out of 100 in this neighborhood, and there's a reason for that. It's to a human scale. You feel good when you walk around the neighborhood. I don't think I'm gonna feel good with a 14-story structure of steel and glass that is simply out of character. I love the character of this city, and as I said, I don't wanna see a very large structure in my backyard. At the same time, I don't wanna see a vacant, or a big hole in the ground while people wait and try to decide what they're going to put there. So, I would ask the council to vote down this project as it has been presented, and also to not demo the building until there is a plan in place and a very strong idea of what, what kind of structure and how that structure is going to fit into our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on this issue? Hearing none? Yes, ma'am? No? I saw your hand just in time.
I'm on it.
If you need to share your name and your address.
Yes, Carol Parrish. I live on the 500 block of West Chestnut Street.
Thank you, ma'am.
I wanted to briefly speak to what the gentleman pointed out regarding the business owners in the 200 block. I recently made an attempt to contact a number of them, without getting specifics as to who they are. Suffice to say, two spoke out against the demolition. One that I was able to correspond with electronically said he wished he had been aware of this prior to tonight. As a resident, it seemed to me that this kind of just landed on everybody's plate, you know, when the newspaper article came out. The people with whom I've corresponded, again electronically, social media, people were shocked, like, what, how did this happen? I asked the same thing, and I also just want to question how, as in the prior discussions and the ruling for demolition of the historic buildings on, I'm sorry, warehouses on Water Street, there was only one proposal supporting the applicant who was asking for demolition, stating that it was beyond repair. So, I don't know what the process is, why there is not a requirement for more than one to be presented by the applicant, you know, showing that it is beyond repair. See what I mean? And seems to be the case for this applicant as well. So, I'm just curious what that process is, if you could explain that, and if there isn't one, why isn't there one, and could there be one? And also, just on behalf of Steve Murray, that recently passed, when he asked back in fall of last year, I believe, "Please just do the right thing." Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. And before you leave, ma'am, if you wanna give your information to our clerk, city clerk, just before you leave the meeting, we can correspond about the question that you had, so you can get the information you're looking for.
Thanks.
Sure, you're welcome. Any other comments? Hearing none, I do wanna give council members an opportunity to comment before we call for the vote, if they would like to.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure.
Mr. Harris, I was gonna comment anyway, so. I'm going to be voting yes on the, on the recommendation to deny demolition by the Historic Commission and the new construction. Having said that, I do commend Mr. Myers for his desire to invest in the city, and I would encourage you to keep working with the administration, but not at the expense of our historic architecture. I look forward to seeing how you repurpose the Prince Street Building, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Are there council comments?
Yes, I would like to address Mr. Myers. I only had a major concern, being in the health industry, and it was that you didn't really present enough facts, or you did not bring about who exactly was going to take care of the independent living. And I also have some information here that I brought that might help you if you do pursue something in the future for independent living. When I think of independent living, being the fact that I do visit a lot of residents, that I enjoy doing that on a personal note, they really like quietness, they, they like their trees, they like to see their flowers, they like to sit on the porch. You know, being in the city, it's more like, "All right, let's go out and let's have a drink at the bar," or, you know, "Let's, let's take a tour and let's go see what's out there," activities. But to see elderly's out there, I'm one of those Mother Hubbard person that won't protect the elderly all the time. So, I just wanna let you know that, you know, it's not anything against you, I think your project is excellent in reference to having affordable housing, it's just that it took me by surprise that I didn't hear any more about who exactly was going to be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I also expected to take up Mr. Harris's charge, and although I appreciate what Mr. Everly's putting forth as far as the intention behind the project, I have to agree with something that Gloria Rast said in the letter that she shared with us, and that being, you know, even if the building needs significant repair, it hasn't outlived its usefulness. So, in this case, I believe that rehabilitation and reuse of the existing building allows for the ongoing sustainability and preservation of not only the character of the building itself, but also of the city, cityscape. So, for that reason, I'll be voting to uphold the commission's recommendation.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sure, Councilman.
I can acknowledge that this community needs a lot more affordable housing. I can understand the, the need for having an area of this city that is preserved, where we preserve the historical buildings in this city. You know, people talk about gentrification, but at some point, there has to be a balance, a balance in what the need of the community is, and to preserve our heritage in this community. But demolishing this building is not it, and I cannot support it. I've stated in the past, there are times when there's a time to vote yes and a time to vote no. Well, this is a time to vote yes, and that's the way I'll be voting today, to uphold the recommendations of the Historical Commission and deny the, and deny the demolition of this building. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
I've lived in Lancaster for close to 50 years, and appreciate so much the historical aspect of the city, the architectural aspect of all the buildings in this city. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Myers has said that he would pursue some type of economic growth in the city regardless. But at this point, I would, I'm, I'll probably, I'll be voting to uphold the Historics, the Historic Commission's recommendation to demolish, not demolish.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith-Wadeell?
Okay. No need.
All right. Just briefly, I wanna thank Mr. Myers, times two. I think they're both here this evening. I wanna thank them for the conversations that we've had. This is exactly what we ask developers to do in the city in terms of conversating. Now, there's a very, very real divide in terms of the opinions on this project, but we can't not acknowledge when people are doing what we ask them to do, which is come and talk to us, come up with an idea. If we respectfully disagree on an idea, then we come back up to the plate and we try again. So, I wanna thank you personally for coming to meetings, for listening. Again, there have been respectful disagreements, and frankly, as a business owner, I'm sure that it can be difficult at times when you come up with a project, and you have people who have very different opinions on something that you feel very strongly about. I will say that you were very professional throughout this process, and I wanna acknowledge that. I wanna thank both of you for doing that. I think that's meaningful, and I think that's exactly what we want from people. I will tell you that we, we have had so many conversations about this as council members, with members of the public over the last several weeks, and this is one of those rare times where I have not had one person who I've conversated with told me that they were in support of this project. And many people who also acknowledged the fact that they appreciated the vision of trying something new. So, I want you to also hear that. It wasn't a blanket, "This is ridiculous, don't ever do anything like this." What I heard a lot of was, "We can't be tearing down these buildings." However, I like the shot, I like the idea, I like the forethought, we're gonna need that forethought, we want them to continue to come up to the plate, we just can't have you do this one. So, I thought a lot about it, but I will say, when the Historic Commission that we rely on as experts gives us such an overwhelming opinion, and then every one of my constituents that I talk to says the exact same thing, I, these are those situations where I can't ignore that. And if I did, I would have to have a very, very good reason to do so, and it's just, I don't know what that reason would be. Historic architecture is critical, I'm a history nerd, I love it. Also, though, we've spent the last year and a half having very difficult issues, or conversations about these issues. These new council members have been put right in the fire, talking about historic preservation and what we're gonna do about it. So, I appreciate the fact that we're having these conversations, this won't be the last one. I appreciate Mr. Mrs. Lee, excuse me, Mrs. Leachie's comments about the fact of, "Where do we go from here?" And we've had, thank you, Mr. Harris, thank you, Mrs. Leachie and others, who have helped to educate me on the fact that we can't keep doing this piecemeal, or we're gonna continue to run into these problems. How do we do it? If it was easy, we would've fixed it. It's not easy, but the fact that we have public meetings like this, I think certainly bodes well for us going forward. So, with that being said, Mr. Harris, if you could call for the vote, please. Now, just to be clear, a yes vote, an a vote, is to uphold the Historic Commission's recommendation to deny demolition. So, an a vote is to deny demolition, a no vote is to overturn the Historic Commission's recommendation and allow demolition, just to be clear.
Yes, Mr. President, and on two applications.
Yes, on both applications for demolition for this specific site.
Wait for a question. The construction.
We're gonna just do that one separately, just because they're listed separately.
Is that how your understanding of Mr. Harris are?
Yes, that's all he read into the record.
Excellent.
Yep.
Mr. Balenzin?
Aye.
Ms. Gregg?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Kuper?
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
President Reichenbach?
Aye. We move on to the next phase of this project, would be the proposed construction. Mr. Harris?
221 North Prince Street LLC, owners of 225 to 227 North Prince Street, proposed construction of a new 13-story mixed-use building.
I have a motion.
Approve.
We have a motion and a second to uphold the Historic Commission's recommendation to deny the, to construct the 13-story mixed-use building. Council comments? I don't think there'd be much different comment than what we just discussed, being as though it's the same project. However, I wanna give people the opportunity.
I actually, I will take this opportunity here to offer my appreciation to the Historical Commission and to our Historic Commission and to our historic preservation specialists for the expertise that they've, they've provided over the course of this, and facilitating documents and expert opinions for our ultimate judgment. So thank you.
Agreed, thank you.
And if I could just add to that, also the feedback that we got from our neighbors and residents.
From the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris? Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Ms. Gregg?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Kuper?
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
President Reichenbach? Aye. Move on to C, under the Heritage District?
City of Lancaster, owner of 425 West King Street, proposes demolition of a one-story fire station and a rear garage, and construction of a new two-story fire station at that site.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion and a second. Just to be clear, these, this application was recommended for approval by the Historic Commission, so I assume those motion and a second are for a upholding of that. Okay? Council comments? I, yes, ma'am? I just wanna thank the mayor for bringing in Chief Little, and firefighters, and others to have input into what they're gonna be looking for, for their long-term needs. One thing I have heard loud and clear from our firefighters is that their resources of where they work are substandard at best. They do a really, really difficult job, they haven't, they haven't complained as much as pointed out the obvious, which is they need facilities that can support them. The long-term health is critical, in terms of the new design of the buildings, I think is gonna be critical for making sure that they have safe and secure environments to work, which is terrific, and I just wanna thank you for bringing people into the process and having the conversations. I think that's meaningful. So this is the first of two that we'll be voting on this evening, 425 West King Street. Do we have comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. To be clear, this is for both demolition and new construction on that side.
Correct, my apologies. Demolition and new construction, a yes vote is to approve. Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Ms. Gregg?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Kuper?
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Reichenbach? Aye. Then we'll move on to D.
City of Lancaster, owner of 333 East King Street, proposes demolition of a modern one-story fire station and construction of a new two-story fire station on the site.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Council comments? Like to replay my previous comments, mayor? Thank you, no, I'm just kidding. Thank you for bringing people in to comment on this as well, it is appreciated. From the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris? Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Ms. Gregg?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Kuper?
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
President Reichenbach? Aye. Ordinances for final passage, Administration Bill Number Two, 2019.
In ordinance of the City of Lancaster, of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, renaming the Department of Economic Development and Neighborhood Revitalization as the Department of Community Planning and Economic Development, and changing all references to the Department of Economic Development and Neighborhood Revitalization within the Code of the City of Lancaster to the Department of Community Planning and Economic Development, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the severability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect in accordance with Pennsylvania law.
Are you hear a motion? Motion to approve? Have a motion and a second. This was introduced in the committee of the whole, simply a renaming, but I think some of the conversations we had tonight are pretty relevant. I don't wanna speak for the mayor, but I'd like to give her the opportunity, I think this name does signal something that's very important to her and her administration, so...
I was gonna save this for the mayor's report, but thank you, Councilwoman.
Sure, I think it's relevant.
So, what's in the name? Well, in this case, it is an elevating, elevation of community planning, and it speaks to some of the things that we're grappling with tonight. So how we're elevating community planning, maintaining focus on economic development, and obviously with the, with the addition of a Director of Neighborhood Engagement, we're not, we're not missing neighborhood revitalization. That will continue to be a key part of the work of the city moving forward. The city is committed to updating its comprehensive plan, which hasn't been done since 1993, to assist in making decisions about housing density, height, historic structures, the very...